Good afternoon, Commissioners. This is Troy, your host. We are live and recording.
Thank you, Troy. Appreciate that. Commissioners, are we ready to begin?
Yes, sir.
Yes.
All right. If everyone will please come to order. And let's begin with an invocation from Pastor Jason Van De Veer, please. Pastor, once again, it's great to see you. Please, carry on.
Father, we just come before you this afternoon, and, Lord, we don't want to come here with our own understanding, leaning on our own knowledge and wisdom, but, Lord, we want to come to you, and we pray that you would meet us here at this time, in this place, that we would truly be dependent upon you, Lord, that you would just shower each person, Lord, here with your grace, with your wisdom. And, Lord, we do want to pray in the grander scheme that your will would be done, as your son taught us to pray, that your will would be done on earth as it is in heaven, that your kingdom would come. But we look forward to that time when he will come for his church and to judge and to rule and reign in righteousness. But in the meantime, Lord, we pray that we would be about your business, and we do thank you for the blessing of government leaders to serve the people. We pray that you would bless this time, Lord, that you would just work in your grace and in your mercy. And so, Lord, we love you, we thank you, and it's in Jesus' name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor, for those words of grace and wisdom to begin our meeting. If everyone will please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Turning to the county attorney for certification of the agenda.
Yes, sir. The county attorney's office has reviewed all items on the agenda, and the board has appropriate jurisdiction over these matters.
Thank you, Counselor. Commissioners, are there any disclosures for any items on this agenda to be made?
I have none.
I have none.
Nor have I. Going to get into our ceremonies and proclamations today with a resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Purple Thursday during October 2024. And I see Nicole Adams, Human Services Program Manager and CPS Intake. Please.
Good afternoon. Can you hear me okay? As Commissioner O'Teal indicated, I'm here just to review a resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Purple Thursday during October 2024. Whereas October is known as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, an annual campaign that raises awareness about the impacts of intimate partner violence and its consequences, while signifying to survivors that they are not alone. And whereas one in three women and one in nine men will experience intimate partner violence in their lifetime, the highest incidence occurring between the ages of 16 and 24, entering a cycle of violence that is hard to escape alone. And whereas one in 15 children are exposed to domestic violence, and 90% of those children witness this abuse, children who witness domestic violence are at increased risk for post-traumatic stress disorder, aggressive behavior, anxiety, impaired development, difficulty interacting with peers, academic problems, and have a higher incidence of substance abuse. And whereas 489 families were referred to the Douglas County Child Welfare Department to date in 2024 with primary concerns related to domestic violence. And whereas in 2023, the Crisis Center, thank you, Sabrina, for being here, served 324 Douglas County adults and children in need of domestic violence services. And whereas domestic violence is a serious crime that affects people of all races, ages, gender, education and income levels, encompassing various forms of abuse, including physical, emotional and sexual violence. And whereas the crime of domestic violence violates an individual's privacy, dignity, security and humanity. And whereas everyone has the right to have healthy relationships, have access to trauma-informed services and education that affirms that domestic violence is not acceptable. And whereas survivors of domestic violence deserve our support, compassion and resources to rebuild their lives in a safe and healthy environment. Whereas providing trauma-informed services to survivors is critical in eliminating domestic violence, and that obligation falls on the entire community and needs to be a local priority. We encourage all members of our community to engage in conversations, support local advocacy efforts, and stand in solidarity with survivors. Together, we can make a difference and work towards a future where everyone feels safe and valued. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Board of County Commissioners for the County of Douglas, State of Colorado, hereby proclaim that October 2024 shall be commemorated as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and that October 17th be commemorated as Purple Thursday in honor of Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
All right. Thank you, Nicole, very much. Board, any questions or comments for the program manager and residents watching?
Nicole, you are someone who doesn't just talk the talk, you walk the walk. And I remember back when I was the county coroner, and you and I had cases that we needed to work together that involved just what you spoke about. And I know that there are cases that you dug deep into and got them solved, that most people didn't even realize there was some violence. And so, this is why it's so appropriate for someone like you to read this, because you do this hard work every day for our kids, for our families. And that's why I'm proud to stand alongside of you and work with you. So, thank you, Nicole.
Thank you.
You know, Nicole, I really appreciate you bringing this forward. And, you know, domestic violence awareness is something that we should be aware of year-round, and whether it's a male or a female or anyone that is subject to domestic abuse. I'm really proud that it has been a priority of all three of us on this Board of County Commissioners to ensure that there are crisis services for those in need, especially in hidden circumstances. And we know in Douglas County, domestic violence can look differently than it does in other jurisdictions. This is the healthiest county in the state, the most prosperous by most metrics, and so there's a lot of challenges associated with those that are fleeing difficult situations. And so, reducing that stigma and providing an opportunity for those fleeing to have the kind of recovery and wraparound services they need to move forward with their kids and those they love is deeply significant. And I want to thank Crisis Services for being here and being such a wonderful partner. We really appreciate you and the work that you do. And I agree with Commissioner Thomas that the work you do in human services on a daily basis and the cases that you see are heavy and they're intense. We sit as the Board of Social Services, so we hear sometimes from you and others about some of those weightier, more challenging cases. But I just want to say, Nicole, you always conduct yourself so professionally, and you rise above and lead your staff in a way that I think is really laudable. So, thank you for everything and for reading that resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioners. Hey, Nicole, thanks so much for bringing this forward to us. I mean, this is something that I do think we sometimes lose focus on, and we shouldn't. This should be something that hopefully we don't have to think about every day, but I'm glad you're there to think about it every day. And of course, all of our partners here in the county who are there to help us out and help out the people in Douglas County when these horrible situations arise. So, hey, thanks. Thanks for bringing it up. Thanks for commemorating this moment with this resolution that you presented to us. I'm very much in favor. But before we go ahead and vote, I want to go ahead and open the floor for any resident citizen testimony on this matter. Is there anybody who'd like to come forward and speak on this resolution? Seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone to give citizen testimony on this resolution?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right. Thanks, Troy. Board, we have a resolution presented to us by one of our program managers. How would we care to dispose of it?
Mr. Chair, I'm honored to make a motion to approve a resolution proclaiming Domestic Violence Awareness Month and Purple Thursday during October 2024.
Second?
There is a motion and a second. Further discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. And the resolution is adopted. Again, Nicole, thanks so much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Sabrina was curious if we could get a photo with you folks.
No, no, no photos in this room, ever. Yeah, yeah, we can totally do that. Commissioners, if you'll join us down front. All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for letting us do that. Now it's time for the consent agenda to be considered. Board, what is the pleasure?
I have a motion to approve the request on all items A through AB and AD of the consent agenda. Item AC is pulled from the agenda.
Second?
All right. There's a motion and a second on all items on the consent agenda. Any need for discussion? Any need to pull any off?
You know, I'm just wondering, do we need to ask about citizen comment on any of these items?
Oh, thank you, Commissioner. Very well then. Do we have anyone who'd like to come forward and provide citizen testimony on any items on the consent agenda? Seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anybody to provide citizen comment or testimony on any items on the consent agenda?
I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board, and we do have a motion and a second. Any discussion for any of the items? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And consent agenda passes unanimous. Okay, going, turning to our regular agenda. Our first item is a commercial lease agreement between Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and DOC-11045 Lansing Circle MOB LLC for leased space at 11045 East Lansing Circle, Inglewood, Colorado, 80112. Tim Hallmark, Director of Facilities, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Over a year ago, we started a search for a location property to help house the new judicial 23 district for the services we need to continue to provide for our residents. As we went through this search, we came to realize that we needed to make sure that we found a location that provided us the opportunity to always be a good neighbor to those surrounding us with the services we were offering. We've looked at over 60 different properties within Douglas, as well as Arapahoe Counties, trying to find that exact spot that would be a good fit for us, as well as the surrounding community. We're recommending that we go ahead and move forward with the lease at 11045 East Lansing Circle. Building is known as the Lansing Point Facility in Meridian. We have no direct adjacent seat or neighbors that we're going to cause any disruption for. We also identified this location as being a good fit for location, ease of accessibility, access to public transportation, which is very important for our judicial district, as well as it provides a great opportunity for some other county services, such as human services, and our Douglas County Health Department. It's all about location, and getting it to the northern part of the county and getting close to public transportation is going to make all of those services easier accessible for the citizens of Douglas County. So, here asking for your approval to move forward with our lease at Lansing Point.
All right. Thank you, Tim. Questions from the board for Mr. Hallmark?
You know, I don't have any questions, although I had a lot of questions before. Mostly, I just have some comment, and it's primarily gratitude to our broker and to our Director of Facilities. Tim, you hear so much from the three of us and from citizens and staff, and you have a lot on your plate. And I just wanted to personally thank you, and thank you on behalf of the county. Folks, do not realize the level of effort and work you have put into ensuring that this is the perfect fit for all those we serve. I believe that this is a wonderful reflection of the open and transparent conversation we've had with citizens for a long time on this project. And the amount of planning and effort you've put into looking at 60, I mean, that is just a remarkable level of commercial properties. You've also given us the opportunity to tour several times. I have toured the facility, and it is this perfect combination of a great deal for us fiscally. It's in the perfect location right in Meridian, but somehow you found a place that is surrounded by nothing. So, there's really no neighbors to complain or be upset about the adjacency, yet it's a wonderful facility that will house some really significant departments within our county. So, huge, huge thanks for your work. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Tim, I would like to thank you for your work, and Jeff Brandon, for everything you did to get us here today. I remember August of 2018, listening to DA then George Brockler give us a budget request, and I realized that Douglas County was subsidizing the prosecution of crime in Aurora. That was 2018. And I remember after that, speaking with fellow Commissioners Roger Partridge and Diane Holbert about what if Douglas and Albert and Lincoln just left the 18th, and we became our own District Attorney's Office, our own judicial district? And people told me then, it's never going to happen. But here we are today, ready for this to start in just four months, on January 14th of 2025. And it's because of the work of staff like you. Tim, you have been jumping on this for almost a year, I think, trying to get a solution. And there's many other staff in this building. I see John Huber back here. Technology is going to be a huge part of this. And Jim, we are making history, and it's going to be successful and seamless because of your efforts and many other staff here in the room. So, I just really want to thank you for not quitting.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Tim, just a couple of questions for you. So, while we were during this, in the middle of this process, we did consider a couple of times just outright buying the building. We weren't sure if we'd have the capabilities. But can you tell us, do we have, we're doing a lease here, do we have a purchase option built into this?
Yes, Commissioner, we do. Between years three and five, we have a purchase option.
Okay. Obviously, we all had an opportunity to tour the site. It looks like a great building right off the bat. One of our concerns has been able to get JD-23 personnel up and running at a site on their own as soon as possible. Can you update us on what that expectation is of the timeline of being able to get JD-23 personnel in there?
Yes, sir. Tomorrow, we're actually going up and touring the first floor, which is currently fully furnished in its current configuration with the District Attorney's Office, as well as probations, to look at how we can use that space temporarily while the tenant improvements happen for their permanent location on the second floor. IT's already been there with, along with us, thanks to John and Jim's team, to kind of get our head around what that might start looking like. Our goal is probably to have them active December of this year, is where they can start having a spot to go land and kind of get situated and use that while we do the tenant improvements. The tenant improvements for the permanent location, we're estimating at this time probably a move-in of that somewhere around June of 2025. But we're going to get that first floor ready for them so that we are successful as of January 1st. Yes, sir.
Okay. Cool, cool. Very good. I think that was really my goals, was to be able to get JD-23 up and running when the district formally exists come January. So, it sounds like we're going to hit that mark. I don't think I have any other questions for you, Tim. Any further questions from the board before we go to citizen testimony?
Tim, I'll just clarify. I think this is 1.7 million a year to rent, and there's the potential that the county could eventually buy this building. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am, that's correct. Year one's lease is approximately 1.7. Year two, when we start paying for the first floor, that'll go up to approximately 2.5 per year. And then, yeah, we have a purchase option years three through five.
Great. I will not be here, but I hope that whatever board is here will look at that, because if we're going to be there for 15 years, I think this is a 15-year lease, at 2.5 million a year, we can buy that building for this amount of money. So, I hope that's a consideration.
Any further questions before going to citizen testimony? All right. Let's go ahead. Thank you, Tim. Very much appreciate presenting this to the board. At this time, we'd like to open the floor for any citizen testimony on this lease agreement. If there's anyone who'd like to speak at this time, please identify yourself and come forward. And seeing none in the room. Troy, do we have anyone to speak on this lease agreement?
I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board for action. What is the board's pleasure on this lease agreement presented by Mr. Hallmark?
Mr. Chair, if it pleases the board, I will make a motion to approve a commercial lease agreement between Douglas County Board of County Commissioners and DOC-11045 Lansing Circle MOB LLC for leased space at 11045 East Lansing Circle, Inglewood, Colorado, 80112.
Second?
All right. There's a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And that passes unanimous. Thank you, Mr. Hallmark. Your work has actually just begun, but good work up until this point. Thanks for bringing this for us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
All right. Our next item in our regular agenda is Federal Finance Assistance Award of Domestic Grant 24-DG-11021600-073 between Douglas County Government and the USDA for Service Rocky Mountain Region Safety, Fire and Aviation Management for $800,000 in congressionally-directed spending. Mr. Dan Avery, Special Projects Manager, presenting for staff.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I apologize for the lengthy title on that grant document. This agreement that you'll hear more about shortly is the culmination of efforts that started way back in March of 2023, working with our congressional delegation. And fortuitously, Senator Bennett's office was familiar with Sandstone Ranch and its wildfire mitigation needs, and I believe that that helped us with our application. We are excited that we're now culminating in an award for that earmarked request. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to the staff that made the grant application possible, and will also implement that.
Please.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Dan. For open space and natural resources, I'm here with the team with Spencer Weston from Colorado State Forest Service. He is the supervisory forester there. And Brian Smith is our land management specialist ranger, who has worked directly with Spencer to put this grant together. Our request today is to accept $800,000 in congressionally-directed funding, which was really supported by Senators Hickenlooper and Bennett's offices. This will be used for wildfire mitigation on Douglas County-owned properties. The properties here that we're discussing, Sandstone Ranch and the Pike Hill Complex, are both these red stars. The black line that you're seeing here is an ideal shaded fuel break between the Pike National Forest and our, kind of that front range communities where our suburbs and rural properties meet the Pike National Forest. Ideally, we would be working with partners along this front range to kind of create a break between the national forest and our community here. Ideally, this, by the way, the shaded fuel break here is approximately 30 miles long. So, our portion is pretty small in the big scale of things, but we do want to be leaders here and make sure our own properties are taken care of. Where we anticipate all of our spending to occur, Sandstone Ranch down south here, we're looking at about 135 acres of mitigation at about $3,000 an acre. And then, the Pike Hill Complex there, we're looking at treating anywhere between 80 and 100 acres there. The topography there is pretty steep, so helicopter, helicopter use may be required there. So, we're looking at about 395,000 for a total of 800,000 altogether. This map here on the left is showing Sandstone Ranch and the areas that need to be treated. And you can really see how densely populated our trees are in this area. And this picture to the right is what it would look like once it's actually treated. So, you see a huge contrast of what it looks like here on the ground now to what we want it to look like, where it's a little bit more opened up there. The other property we're looking at is the Nelson Ranch Open Space Complex Pike Hill area. So, this is the Roxborough Community here, and then Indian Hills area outside of Sedalia. Our properties are here. You can see from here how steep the topography is. You can see from here how, how steep the topography is. Um, but we do need to get some, um, mitigation done in this area. It is also very thick back there. Um, so we want to do our part there to clear that. And then, yeah, this, this concludes my presentation. I think, right now, at this point, staff is requesting a board motion to accept the funding, uh, for the wildfire mitigation.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Very much appreciate you bringing this before us. Uh, questions from the board for Dan?
You know, Dan, this is phenomenal work. And, you know, as the chair and founder of the Douglas County Wildfire Action Collaborative, I know the experts in that room and certainly those that we serve are deeply pleased, um, with your work and certainly this incredible award. We know that the shaded fuel break can be one component of that really important arsenal to fight wildfires. So thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Excuse me.
So, Dan, who is going to do this work once we get this money?
So we are working, uh, through the Colorado State, um, Forest Service and to find contractors to do this work. So staff will not be doing this work. We will be bidding the work. Um, so we've worked through finance on that. Uh, this work will be done. We have multiple groups, uh, multiple outside, uh, groups, uh, that would go out and do the work for us. So we would just contract that work.
So do we have, I'm, I'm interested in the timeline. Do we have the money now? How long will it take to get the money? Then we have to do an RFP. So when do the you and your experts here think this project will be completed?
We, we have until, I, Dan, is it five years? Yeah. Yeah, five years from the time we get in. And to just be clear, funding starts reimbursement basis, but when does it start? Okay. Upon, upon execution by the board is when we'll actually start it. Um, so we'll have five years from the, the time we execute it. I absolutely believe the work can be done within that five years time span. Spencer, do you have any thoughts on that?
Um, no, this project is, so we have an existing MOU with Douglas County Open Space. My agency does, so we do work for them, uh, forestry-related. Uh, we will start marking trees and laying out boundaries next spring, summer, once all that's been marked out. Um, prescriptions and a couple of work has been developed. We'll get that out to bid later in the summer, early fall, and then it'll just be dependent on contractor availability. But, uh, with that timeframe, I would assume by 2026 summer, we should have all the work completed.
Spencer, have you done projects like this before?
Uh, yes, ma'am. We, we've, uh, in the last five years alone, my office has treated almost 7,000 acres of land here in Douglas County, both, uh, private county open space and state parks.
Um, you know, I've heard your name over and over when we talk about this topic. People just say Spencer. So you are known as Spencer. You have a great reputation. People drop your name a lot. So thank you for being here. I think this, um, really is a great opportunity for us to keep our county safe. And thank you both for being a part of today's presentation.
Thank you.
All right. I don't have any questions other than, I'll reserve my comments about how great it is to see this project and this, and of course, this funding, uh, after, uh, citizen testimony. Uh, board, do we have any further questions or comments before moving to citizen testimony?
Well, I would just echo those, uh, high words of, of compliment and thanks to Spencer as well. You have been so active with us in Douglas County. We really appreciate it.
Yeah. All right. At this time, let's go ahead and open the floor for any citizen testimony on the acceptance of this grant award. Is there anyone who would like to come forward and speak at this time? Jill, come on forward. And of course, Jill, you've heard me say it before, you're no stranger to the board, but please do give us your name and tell us where you're from and you begin your comments.
Sounds like a picnic from what our South Metro firefighters did for bears and snakes. Is it a picnic? You can take your sandwich up there and work like that by 2026? No. Good work. And so when I was looking at Colorado Strategic Wildfire, Wildfire Action, sorry, Wildfire Action Program with the Department of Natural Resources with the Bureau of Reclamation, have you worked with them a lot as well?
Have you worked with them?
Yeah. Have you worked with them? Uh, so as we're in a drought, uh, the western region has a 2023 water plan, and also fire is our biggest risk. I was looking at how risk my house is at the other night because, uh, I had some texts coming that the air quality was poor and that we had some fires. And I think even in Roxborough, some of those birds burnt and electrical wires. So our biggest risk is fire for this, uh, region. And so, uh, I applaud who wants to fight a fire because I think, uh, when I look at the vast, uh, land and resources and the drought we're in, that, um, would be a scary thought to me. But not to put aside the scary thought that when we work together, and I had this thought, I have a minute and 50 seconds. I spoke with, uh, Nick from the water, um, from Highlands Ranch. He, he is the metro, it's not metro, just Centennial, but he doesn't provide water. He just works for Highlands Ranch, but it's through the Water District of Centennial, the Highlands Ranch Water District. So when we, I was talking to him, I got this thought because, uh, I, I had to rip out my shower. It had mold. The guys didn't seal it or whoever laid a floor and nothing was sealed. So right now, I just have a bathtub for my legs. I have a jetted hot tub and they tore down the wall, so I can get a wheelchair there if I need, so, uh, not yet. But, so all I use is a bathtub. And I told Nick, as I got this thought today, I wonder what my water bill is because I like paselot. It relieves my pain in my legs. And so, uh, it's $200 I spend, $100 a month on water. And as we look forward to, uh, the water institution or the putting in not only the Plum Creek, I can't remember what that's called there, but also the, um, the Great Passage for Sedalia, the wastewater plant that was approved, the 14 million project, that when we do this, we have the opportunity to, because, uh, Imperial District, like I spoke last time, and Coachella Valley, uh, did not sign that, uh, that they have water rights. And so we're putting $700,000, and I have 20 seconds, I'll speak faster in Chinese, it's faster. That 700,000 feet acres of water is going back into, uh, Lake Mead, Lake Powell, and then we can push it through the, the, uh, the Colorado River. So as we do a comprehensive, maybe you contact someone from the Borough of Recreation because there's federal grants, they're working, the government is trying to save our west coast, and that might give you even more money.
All right. Thank you, Jill. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone to speak on the acceptance of this federal, uh, grant assistance?
I have no online comment.
Thank you, Troy. Bringing it back to the board, um, what is the board's pleasure?
I have a motion to approve the Federal Financial Assistance Award of Domestic Grant 24-DG-11021600-073 between Douglas County Government and the USDA Forest Service Rocky Mountain Region Safety, Fire, and Aviation Management for $800,000 in congressionally directed spending.
Second. All right, there is a motion and a second. Um, for additional discussion, well, first and foremost, it's really great to have the state here as partners on this one. I know, um, uh, based on, uh, attending the C-9 Water Summit last week in Crest Butte that, you know, doing these wildfire-ready, uh, kind of programs, um, is, is going to be a part of the, the state's planning. And this has been something, obviously, uh, you know, well, Spencer, you know, this has been something that we've been working on, uh, for several years as an idea. I'm really glad to see the state coming on board. Very thankful for our two United States Senators for recognizing this as a, a proper forest management technique and, uh, methodology, because I really think, um, again, when forests get treated in this manner, uh, you know, the wildfires can happen. And the reality is it replicates, uh, more, more the historic ponderosa forests that we've had here in Colorado that, that would have, uh, wildfires a part of the landscape. And when they're managed in this manner, that we don't get these horrendous crown fires that cause so much damage and destroy the forest. Instead, if a wildfire should break out in these treated areas, the reality is, um, the area's been treated to act more like a historic, more like the natural forest, um, uh, before we started, um, trying to manage a zero tolerance for any kind of wildfires. And the forests will be healthier over time, will be safer as a community over time. So I think it's phenomenal. Again, thanks to have the state here. Thank you very much, Senators Hickenlooper and Bennett, for, uh, uh, seeing the value in this kind of project. And more specifically, Dan, tell the team, great job on this. Good job, guys. Uh, really appreciate this. Um, let's, uh, let's do, uh, obviously, we, we think we're going to get, uh, the county lands that are bordering here treated, but let's, let's keep working on this. Let's keep, uh, going. Let's keep working with the state and looking for these opportunities to even extend this kind of forest treatment, um, into private lands. And, and actually, um, let's keep up the pressure and see if we can get it up in the Pike National Forest, where we know there's a lot of danger there right now with, um, past forest, forest management techniques giving us kind of an elevated fire danger. Uh, any further discussion? All right. There is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, uh, okay, Dan, we'll take the money. No problem. It is accepted. Our next item is a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition 127. This is from the, uh, this was introduced by Commissioner Thomas for consideration last week, and county administration will be bringing this forward.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, the matter before you is Colorado Proposition 127. It is titled, "To Prohibit Hunting of Mountain Lion Bobcat and Lynx Initiative." The Commissioners are unanimous in their desire to take a public opinion, uh, to public position in opposition to this. And I might turn it back over to the board if you want to read the resolution. We do have, uh, two distinguished guests associated with the campaign that are here should you have any questions or, or comments.
Very good. Commissioner Thomas, you're the one that introduced this, this to the board for consideration. Um, I'm going to give you the opportunity to speak, uh, in favor of the resolution as introduced.
I'd be happy to speak in favor of it later, but I'm wondering if we could have John Swartout read the resolution, actually? Do we have a copy that we could present to him to read?
That sounds great. All right, well, now, Citizen Swartout, you have been, uh, volunteered. All right, uh, Mr. Swartout, oh, come on, we know you as John. You are known to the board, but please do, please introduce yourself, give your credentials, and then please, uh, per the request of the Commissioner, read the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, my name is John Swartout. I'm resident of Douglas County, uh, Highlands Ranch, and I have worked with the Colorado Parks and Wildlife, formerly the Division of Wildlife, for 35 years in different capacities over the years. I've worked for U.S. Senators, I've worked for three governors, um, and I've worked for, as the executive director of the Great Outdoors Colorado Trust Fund. And in that experience, I've had a lot of, um, time spent with professional management of wildlife in our state, and there's a great debate on that. And there's a wildlife commission that, um, adjudicates that in public comment. They do a good job managing wildlife in this state, and so I'm really here on my own behalf and on behalf of landowners in this state that feel that the passage of, uh, this initiative 127 would be detrimental to the science-based, data-based management of wildlife in our state. And just another comment, I have, I'm working right now on trying to keep the greater sage grouse off the endangered species list, mostly in western Colorado. And I work with biologists and scientists that do this work, and a recent study published in, um, California, who implemented, uh, something similar to 127, saw huge declines in bighorn sheep populations. So the management of wildlife is complicated. It's, it, it is best done with scientists and folks at Colorado Parks and Wildlife with public comment. Uh, you know, they, they don't always get it right, but it's based on data and science rather than, uh, initiative from outer staters put on our, our ballot for consideration. So the resolution, uh, a resolution opposing passage of, uh, Proposition 127 says, "Whereas state voters will have the opportunity at November 5th, 2024 statewide general election to change the Colorado revised statutes concerning the prohibition on the trophy hunting of mountain lions, lynx, bobcats, and in connection therewith, defining trophy hunting as intentional killing, wounding, pursuing, entrapping, or discharging or releasing of a deadly weapon at a mountain lion, lynx, or bobcat, creating exemptions from this prohibition, including the protection of human life, property, livestock, establishing, quote, 'trophy hunting as a class one misdemeanor,' and increasing the fines and limiting the wildlife license privileges for persons convicted of this crime, the ballot measure. And whereas the practice of trophy hunting is already illegal in Colorado, Proposition 127 would prohibit all hunting of mountain lions and bobcats, which would have significant consequences for the future of Colorado's wildlife management policies. And whereas the ballot measure would undermine the authority of Colorado Parks and Wildlife, for, who, who for decades have utilized regulated hunting as an effective tool to manage our state's mountain lion and bobcat populations. And whereas, according to Colorado Parks and Wildlife, both mountain lions and bobcats are considered to have healthy and stable populations, prohibiting the hunting of these animals could result in the rapid population increases, which would pose a significant threat to other species in Colorado. And whereas the ballot measure would require Colorado Parks and Wildlife to upend their current management plan for both mountain lions and bobcats. Not only this, but the agency would also likely have to change how they manage other wildlife species as well due to their likely increase in predator populations. The ballot measure would create a cascade effect that would require changes to wildlife management procedures that may do more harm and good. And whereas oftentimes, changes to wildlife management policy can have disproportionate impact on Coloradans who live in rural areas and encounter these predators on a more frequent basis than their urban neighbors. And whereas fees collected from mountain lion and bobcat hunting contribute to Colorado State Parks and conservation efforts, these funds help to keep our state, state parks open, well taken care of, and provide, as well as provide jobs for scientists and wildlife professionals in Colorado. Now, therefore, it be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Douglas County that the board, oops, opposes the passage of Proposition 127 and urges its citizens to vote against this ballot measure at the general election."
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swartout. Very much appreciate you introducing that resolution before us. Uh, Commissioner Thomas.
I appreciated Mr. Swartout calling in and asking if this board would continue, consider doing this because, as this resolution says, trophy hunting is already illegal in the state of Colorado. So this isn't about trophy hunting. I'm not quite sure what it is, but when you look at all the different things that already are in place in this arena, it's going to undo a lot of good that is already taking place. So I am opposed to it. I appreciate Mr. Swartout bringing this to us. Um, I will make sure this goes out in my weekly newsletter again to make sure people know that this is what they call, I think, biology at the ballot box. Have you heard that, John?
Yes.
Yeah. Uh, this, this is not good for our state. On Friday, I'll just mention that I'm on the Board of CCI. That's the statewide organization of county commissioners. One of the other board members is Mayor Linky from Grand County. They have had a lot of problems with wolves in Grand County, and he talked about a young family whose kids were out in the yard and wolves approached their small children. And so that is another example of biology at the ballot box that is not working. So we have two fronts we need to deal with. We need to try and put a pause on wolves until we figure this out. Someone made a comment that if you, you have Someone made a comment that if you have a ditch that is leaking, you don't keep putting more water in your ditch, you shut off the ditch until you fix the problem. So we need to fix the problem with wolves before we start something else that we don't need to do in the first place. So I am in full support of this motion to approve, to oppose 127.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layton, any questions pertaining to this resolution?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And Mr. Swartout, thank you for your long history working in the field of Parks and Wildlife and the many other endeavors in which you've made Colorado a better place to live and work. I fully understand the concepts presented in the resolution and appreciate you reaching out to Commissioner Thomas to address this. No doubt, there are significant unintended consequences that can result from the best of intentions. So I would welcome some additional comment, but certainly appreciate the resolution.
Okay, very good. I've got no questions pertaining to this. I'll go ahead and open up to citizen testimony. And Mr. Swartout, you are a resident, so if you would like to start citizen testimony and add any additional comments that are your own, please do.
Yeah, I would just, thank you, Commissioner. I would just add to my comments at the beginning by saying that one of my biggest concerns in Colorado right now is the state of private landowners, especially ranchers and farmers, and where they live, how hard it is to make a living, the pressure on them to sell that land for development in areas where that would be extremely harmful to wildlife. Corridors for movement of elk and deer, corridors for movement of endangered species, the amount of potential endangered species that arise on private land. We started 30 years ago, working with Colorado Parks and Wildlife to build a partnership with these landowners, one that could do more than any government bureaucracy could ever do. These partnerships have benefited Colorado in so many ways, and in the last number of years, those landowners have felt like the state has abandoned them, not just on this, but on the ballot initiative regarding wolves, which Commissioner Thomas brought up, but in other things, and regulations and other things. This partnership between landowners and Colorado Parks and Wildlife has served this state very well and kept our wildlife populations balanced and healthy. And they do it, because a lot of times, the balance is that the winter range for the cattle is on the private property owned by the rancher, but the summer range is on federal lands oftentimes, especially on the west slope, and even some places on the eastern plains. And that balance is the same for wildlife. Keeping these properties intact, keeping these ranchers in business is good for wildlife, and yet the pressure on them, both regulatory, policy coming from the ballot box, is making it really difficult for them. And we need these landowners. Without them, we cannot manage wildlife in our state. And they're asking for folks to oppose 127, this kind of continuation of ballot box wildlife management in our state. Will drive our landowners to sell that land for development, and then the wildlife habitat is gone. 35 acre, I'm not opposed to development, but there are places and times where that should not happen, and if we force these landowners out of business, that's exactly what will happen. And those wildlife corridors will move somewhere else, and they'll be gone forever. And so I just make the pitch, I've spent my whole life working on this partnership. It's the most important thing I've ever done in my life, and I would really appreciate support for this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Swartout. Always appreciate seeing you, John. Thanks for helping to introduce this one. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and give us citizen testimony on this resolution? Jill, come on forward. And Jill, give us your name, tell us where you're from.
Oh, I finally heard you. Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. Sorry, I ignore you every time. So in 2020 during COVID, I lived in the farm, which is near Grandview and Centennial and out towards Pinery, or that's Parker, but more towards, you know, the east Aurora Reservoir, towards Cherry Creek, too. And so that, that summer, you know, was hot, too, but we had a mountain lion or a bobcat climb over someone's fence in a, in a area, and I've seen bears and people getting attacked by bears, and so we do need to have these regulations, and it's a long-term study, and what incredible, I mean, just to study that, wherever that, I don't know where he went, but, you know, we have to regulate through, we've already destroyed, you know, when they're talking about doing the mitigation or the fuel, the barrier for the fires, that helps because not only, you know, keeping our wildfire fire, not jumping over fleeing fires, we can contain it and get the fire out quickly, but they eat our vegetation and they kill some of the, it's a natural cycle, it's a cycle of life. And so we need these mitigations, we need these laws that are long time in Colorado, people like him who have studied and given his life, he looks like a doctor of mitigation, or, sorry, of wildlife, you know, like this proposition is by someone who's just pulling it out of the air and saying, you know, making another law. And I know that the cycle of life, we were already, you know, on that western range. Anytime I was listening to the land, from the land's business meeting from September 24th, and yes, they, at that Roxborough Park, I've driven in there, they have a two-way lane and a rock that gets them into their entrance, and putting that spa right there is, like he said, like almost putting, I think he said it best, he said, putting a hot dog in, what was his, sorry, I lost my train of thought, I'll think of it. But I do know, we keep rewriting history, we forget history yesterday, and how important is to know that we have a long time history in Colorado, and people are coming from other countries and traversing the land, and they don't even know we're in a drought. And we'll run our water as thick as the pipes, and we have the water coming from the mountains, but do we know we support nine states, and we're in the lower Colorado region basin, the lower basin? And I will think, I will tell you my other thoughts that I spoke with Nick today about, and disregard my rudeness last week about Frank and John Frank and the other. So, Roger, I do know we have an urgency to protect not only our water, but mitigate fires.
All right. Thank you very much, Jill. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and give citizen testimony on this resolution? Ma'am, come on forward. When you come forward, please do give us your name, tell us where you're from, and then begin your comments.
Mr. Chair, county commissioners, thank you for taking up this important proposal and resolution on behalf of Coloradans. My name is Lauren Truitt. I'm a longtime, lifelong Colorado resident and have a long history with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, both as a customer, a client, a volunteer, and a previous staff member. I know the staff of this agency intimately, the men and women that protect our natural resources, the men and women who study the intricacies of wildlife management and natural resource management. This management needs to remain in their hands, and I appreciate your recognition of the importance of that science-based management on behalf of all of Colorado. These are complex issues that are not as simple as people would like us to believe, and having career biologists, researchers, and wildlife management officers manage our wildlife on behalf of our state, our visitors, the people who come to Colorado to enjoy these, really, these valuable assets, the management must stay in their hands. We cannot continue to point to California and other states that have decimated their wildlife agencies as well as their wildlife populations. Coloradans stand on their own. We need to continue to stand on our own and dissuade outside influences from coming into Colorado and telling us how we should do, how we should do Colorado. CPW has over 125 years of wildlife management history in the state of Colorado, and it is on our shoulders in November to stand behind them, to stand behind the research and the management authority that has gone into making Colorado not only a national envy, but a world envy. During my time with Colorado Parks and Wildlife, we had many staff go and consult other countries on wildlife management, including the restoration of the Mexican wolf. A lot of our staff are out there, they are leaders in scientific management, they are leaders in research, and we need to stand behind them and continue to allow them to do their job with as little restriction as possible. So again, I appreciate your attention to this important matter and appreciate you bringing this in front of the entire Commissioner Thomas. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who would like to speak, speak on this resolution? Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone who will be speaking on this resolution remote?
Thank you, Commissioner. I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Bringing you back to the board for action, how would we like to take action on this resolution?
Mr. Chair, I'd be pleased to make a motion to approve a resolution opposing the passage of Proposition 127, and I would be happy to speak in favor of the motion.
Second.
All right. There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Layton.
Well, I'm deeply honored to have those that are so historyed in the work that we're discussing today. Really appreciate Colorado Parks and Wildlife and all of those wildlife biologists and park managers that have been looking at this from an evidence-based perspective for years. That lands very well with me, and I greatly appreciate that. I'm a fifth-generation Coloradan, and I like what you said. I think Coloradans can do it best on their own. We know a little bit more about how to govern our state than outside influences, we hope. You know, back in the 70s, my mother and father were living on the hillside of Georgetown when my dad was a miner, before he became an electrician, and one of my mom's favorite stories was being pregnant with me in 1975, before I was born in 1976, and a mountain lion approaching her when my dad was at work. And her wildlife management practice was just to stare the bobcat down. So that worked for her, but I digress and truly believe that, you know, these practices, when they're informed by the science, are the most beneficial, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Thomas, back to you.
I would just like to thank the two people here who spoke here. We need to oppose 127. It's time that we let the experts, science-based, do their work and leave the ballot box out of it. Thank you.
Well, I absolutely agree with my two colleagues. If for any, listen, I'm a hunter, I'm an advocate for the North American Fair Chase practices that are encapsulated in Colorado law. The reality is, there is no trophy hunting under Colorado law, so it's a misnomer. It's already a bad, you know, proposition. I appreciate that, oh, they want to make killing a wildcat a misdemeanor, but if it's prohibited, that means there will be no licenses issued. Well, folks, to hunt without a license in the state of Colorado is already a classified felony. So, I mean, it's just a poorly written law, obviously written by people who really don't know us here in the state of Colorado, and again, an opportunity to impose other states' values, other states' ideas, other states' bad ideas here in Colorado. So I am firmly opposed. I'm very happy to join my colleagues in this resolution of opposition. With that said, there is a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the resolution is adopted. All right. Thank you. Thanks again, John. Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you introducing that to us. Thank you, Commissioner Thomas, for bringing that to our attention. At this time, I'd like to open the floor for citizen comments. At this time, you are welcome to comment about any topic other than those that appeared on today's agenda. This is an opportunity to share your thoughts and ideas with us. Please state your name and where you reside prior to making your comments. You will have up to three minutes. Obscenity and any comments calling for criminal or violent action are prohibited and could get you ejected from this chamber. Commissioner's comments, if any, will follow. All citizen comments, and I see we have a customer right away. Mr. Huffman, you are not a stranger to the board, but please do step forward. Give us your name, tell us where you're from, and begin your comments.
I have some handouts for the board, please.
Please, to the county attorney. And again, Kurt, give us your name, tell us where you're from.
My name is Kurt Huffman. Do I know the whole address, or how do we do that?
Just, you could just-
Colorado would be fine?
That's just fine.
I'm sorry, I'm just still planning, Commissioner. All right. I just want to start a little bit with an issue that I talked to the board about before earlier, and I just installed over 150 large campaign signings for different, six different candidates across Douglas County, and I've had no problems except on the Douglas County vacant properties. And we actually have rules there. It's kind of funny. Every place else except on these vacant properties, I've had no problems. So I want to talk a little bit about the policy for temporary signs on vacant county-owned properties. I'm going to start with the pictures that you have on the yard signs. So I'm going to start down here at the lower part. It says, "Only one temporary sign is permitted to be, per individual or group, on a particular vacant county-owned property." And then there's also a second rule here. It says, "Temporary signs must be removed by their owner after being on display 45 days, et cetera," or seven days after. I won't go there. And then finally, it says, "Temporary signs must be freestanding and sufficiently sturdy to endure typical weather events." During the primary, a number of people went out there and shoved in yard signs. Of course, the ground in Douglas County, especially on vacant land, is extremely hard. They didn't drill holes or anything, they just tried to stick them in the ground, they blew over in the wind. And I basically, after the primary, and then actually now with the general election, I picked up over 75 yard signs that were just thrown out there and left on county property. And not to mention other things that had to do with sign installations. It kind of, you know, I hate to say it, it's kind of easy from this picture to tell who put those signs out if you want to enforce the rules, and I think maybe they ought to enforce these rules the way they're written. Then we back up to the other side with the large signs, okay? In here, it says, "Temporary signs may not interfere with the safe operation, maintenance, and use of vacant county-owned property or adjacent roadway." Well, one of these, the lower picture is next to a high school in Highlands Ranch, and you can clearly see that the sign was put in, in the mowing, in the mowing area. That would be the maintenance area along the sidewalk next to a high school that's used by thousands of kids every day. Now, let's just sit down to the second one, which is kind of the other one that kind of always gets to me here. It says, "Temporary signs should be placed as not to interfere with other temporary signs." Well, you can clearly see both these signs were intentionally put in to block other candidate signs. Is it sign blocking or sign bullying, is what I put down? And why is this allowed to continue? I thought this was going to be taken care of at the primary, we're now at the general. If you're not going to enforce the rules as they're written, please state, tell everybody. You don't have to clean up after yourself, you can put any sign out there that you want to, and you can block anybody you want to, too, while you're at it. Thank you very much, Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. Huffman. Appreciate your comments. Is there anyone else who'd like to come forward with citizen comment? Jill, go ahead. Of course, Jill, you know what I'm going to say. Please give us your name, tell us where you're from, ma'am.
Jill Campbell, Highlands Ranch. I'm going to look at the flag right now. I have not, I spoke to my son in February. We have deployed so many men to the Middle East. We have conflicts all over the world, don't we? Grateful for a peaceful country, that we can speak it out, maybe sometimes yell it out, sometimes not say it right, but then come to consensus. I think we're good with so many languages, but I want to share something as if I'm in my own house. And I wrote this for my children when we got out of Afghanistan, and it goes like this. I'm a warrior when it's raging. I'd stand on the front line. I'd fight for my brother's gift of life. I'd fight for his freedom. I'd fight for his liberty. I'd be the truth. God set me free to be and see. I'd stand on the front line. I saw him lying dying there in the night's open air, his hands bloody from fighting a war. I asked my brother his name, but a bullet he took in his chest for me made his body and mind lame. He said to me, "Woman, the earth beneath me seems to shift." And I wiped the blood from my brother's head and gave him a sip of water from my tin cup and a morsel of food I found on the ground, but his empty gun lay too far away from him on solid ground. He said to me with tears in his eyes, "Woman..." He said to me with tears in his eyes, 'Woman, we were warriors and we stood on the front line, and our lives are divine, and you saved mine.' And I with tears in my eyes, I watched my brother take his last breath, and I said, 'Fly, fly, fly to God Christ and your brethren.' And with tears in my soul, my father, my brother flew to heaven, and my last breath to him was, 'Brother, fly, you're on God's throne, and I'm still fighting on hell's earth alone, but I'll meet you someday on God's throne.'" And we were warriors, and we stood on the front line, and our lives are divine, and perhaps tomorrow it's me that'll meet you on God's throne, and my brother will be left on earth fighting on hell's earth alone. But God, our lives are divine, and we'll meet in heaven no matter the time, for our lives are divine, and I'd stand on the front line for my brother."
Well, thank you, Jill, for those beautiful words. Very much appreciated. Is there anyone else who would like to give citizen comment at this time? All right. Seeing none in the room, Troy, do we have anyone for citizen comment remote?
Thank you, sir. I have no online comment.
All right. Thank you, Troy. Turning to the committee, to the Board, Commissioner comments, please.
I would just like to mention that we have had Rabbi Ralph Messer here in the past, and yesterday is the one-year anniversary of atrocities that happened in the state of Israel. So I would just like to put on the record that many here have not forgotten you, Israel, and you have people who stand by you. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Layton, any Commissioner comments?
None for me.
My Commissioner comments today are going to, I'll try to keep them brief. I attended the C-9 Water Summit last week in Crested Butte, great gathering of water leaders around, around the state. Two things that were coming up, I was fascinated to hear it come from the agricultural community, but also the environmental community, the concept of water sharing, that when water provisioning is done specifically in many of the instances for municipalities and municipal use, that it be done with this concept of instead doing a buy and dry, but a water-sharing idea, where water would remain in the agricultural community still for agricultural use as these deals are being built. I found that fascinating. I consider that a great step forward for water use in our state. And then the other part, and you heard me talk about it earlier with our agreement to accept the federal funds, it's this concept of a wildfire-ready community that the state is going to be propagating and should be putting, it sounds like, be putting money behind. And obviously, our shaded fuel break that we're doing on our two properties that we heard from earlier are great examples of how that can be done in order to, you know, still maintain the forests that we enjoy while preparing them for, you know, very natural wildfires that are natural on the landscape, and yet don't get so dangerous that they threaten our communities and the very safety of our residents and their property. So just wanted to give that update from the C-9 Water Summit. Moving on to other businesses, is there any other business before the Board?
Nothing today.
Thank you. And county managers report?
Nothing today.
Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it. Okay, well, we're going to go ahead and adjourn, folks. It looks like we're running a little bit late for our public hearing. Our next business meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 22nd, 2024, at 1:30. We look forward to seeing everyone then.